For July, there we go. For July 25th, 2016, will you call her up, please?
Councilmember Deuce.
President.
Jamison, absent.
Skid.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
And here. And a note that Ms. Jamison is absent. Would you stand with me for the pledge, please?
Please hand over your heart and your feet after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager's report.
I don't have any formal report, other than we did hold our sidewalk master plan workshop this afternoon at 3:00, and we are encouraging the public that may have missed that to participate and provide locations where they might like sidewalk in the city. So please contact their public works department with any comments for sidewalks in the city.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we had a pretty good turnout, and I'm going to encourage those that are interested in sidewalks in the city to get a, the map of the city on where the project plans are going to be. And if you have any suggestions on where there should be or should not be sidewalks, please let us know. Next is proclamations. I have a proclamation here for Charlie Jamison, who's a distant relative of our councilwoman, Joanie Jamison. It's a pretty interesting one. I'll read this. Proclamation and a commendation for Charlie Jamison. On behalf of the City of solving California, America's Danish city, and its local residents Roger nephew, David great nephew, and James great-great nephew, all who played at different levels of or umpired America's national pastime, and have recently discovered through DNA testing that the Jamison family has Viking blood. There's the link. And in memory of Charles Divine Jamison, a native of New Jersey, we wish to honor him on his induction to the Cleveland Indians Hall of Fame on July 30th, 2016. And that's the reason that Joanie isn't here, they're back there giving this proclamation to the Hall of Fame. Whereas Charlie's father, having been a semi-pro player, saw his son was gifted with an arm, hustle, and a good bat, encouraged him to play baseball. And whereas Charlie was a Cleveland Indian from 1919 to 1932, and was a member of the 1920 world champion Cleveland Indians. Whereas Charlie owned left field at League Park and was nicknamed the Hawk. And whereas Charlie's major league batting career was 305, wow, with an average of 359 in 1924, second only to Babe Ruth. And whereas Charlie was considered among the greats by Babe Ruth, who called him a player's player. Whereas Connie Mack said, "That's one of the worst mistakes I made was trading Jamison to the Cleveland Indians in 1919." Therefore, on this 25th day of July in 2016, it is a pleasure and great pride that I, Mayor Jim Richardson, along with the city council and the citizens of the city of solving, honor Charles Divine Jamison, the Hawk, with praise and admiration for performing at the top of the ladder, playing America's national pastime, and do hereby celebrate and congratulate him on his induction into the Cleveland Indians Hall of Fame. And that's signed by each council member. So it was, it's really an honor. Can you imagine being in the World Series for 1920? Wow. Next are presentations, the solving conference visitors bureau biennial report.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, city staff, and the audience. I'm Tracy Farhat, Executive Director of the solving conference visitors bureau. And with me tonight are Brenda Ball, our digital media specialist, and also Sarah Brookshire, our conference services liaison. We are here to present you with our year-end report on marketing highlights over the last fiscal year. And with us are our volunteer board members, Dr. Ken Harwood, and our president, Mr. Jeff Paskey. Well, you've heard me wax poetic about the activities and the results of the CBB for many years now. We thought you might like to hear from a few new voices. So since we are in the travel business, we brought you a little home movie to watch. And no need to take notes, we'll provide a handout at the end. So Brenda, roll the tape, please.
Hi, I'm Jeff Paskey, head of solving visitors and conference bureau. And as you see, our streets are incredibly lit and beautiful and appetizing. England, Canada, Denmark, and soon to be China. I just got back from rebuilding Denmark, where I'm an ambassador to solving. And they promote us and help us with getting our visitors coming to solving. Next year, I'm up to China.
Hi, we hosted 2,208 cruise ship visitors last fall in this ring for my United historic walking tours. They spent an average of $103,000 per visit, and over $42,000 in direct therapy. 69% said they used clothing and five-star satisfaction rate. We booked two groups returning to solving. In addition, we have promoted classes in baking, cookie decorating, and white tea stealing. An international study group is returning this fall for another baking class of metals and cookie decorating at solving bakery. We have provided online activities, dining options, lodging, and tours to dozens of required groups. We're at your service.
Hello and welcome. My name is Susan, and we are here in visitor center. In this lovely building, this quarter, we have served nearly 18,000 patrons. We love helping people here at visitor center, and we love all our tourists, we call them tourists, in here. They are lovely, thoughtful people, and we are happy to help them all.
Dear God, sir. Yeah. Two cent up for dinner, guys. All right, you go to a new.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Tracy and I attended three major travel shows and 118 appointments to attract major tour operators. The results have included four Solvay conferences with non-voting companies December and March. That includes three years, community college three-night conferences for a total of 376 new employees. Another inbound wholesale tour operator has added four new Solvay programs to accommodate their 2.4 million online customers. We convinced the tour operator to return to solving following his 16-year absence. The building made new business relationships and recording the town is accomplished. All along keeping Solvay a top of the line for the year ahead.
Solvay hotels have had a banner year with average occupancy levels at an all-time record high of 72%. And that is good business for all of us. Visitor demand brought in approximately 3.7 million to date in transient occupancy tax in the city. Sales staff is on a steady climb as well. Thank you, Sydney solving, for reinvesting in tourism. I think I can relax.
Well, I'd like to thank videographer Dean Clickguard, our willing board members who were a part of that, and especially Brenda, our queen editor, who pulled that all together for crafting this visual report. You're now receiving a poster of the stats behind the making of this film. Feel free to ask us any more questions or details. We love talking about all that goes on in the making solving, top visitor destination. And in fact, last but not least, in addition to being on several top 10 lists this year, the city of solving was recently named by the Santa Maria Sun's 16th Annual Best of Northern Santa Barbara County Reader's Poll as best day trip. So, city, congratulations. Have a happy summer, everyone.
Is that it?
That's it?
You left me hanging. Well, thank you for that, Tracy. That was very well done. And I, those publications that you showed up, that is impressive, that you were in so many publications. It's really good. Any comments?
Council comments?
Yes. No, as in regard to her presentation?
That was a great presentation. Keep up the good work.
Yeah. It's nice to see something different.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public communications, written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers limited to five minutes, so I have no speaker slips. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll come back to the correspondence received by the council. What do we got? Oh, the thank you letter from the...
Hey, hey. Didn't you miss council comments? Yes, you did.
I did. I guess we haven't got much to say, you know?
I can take it we didn't have a nap today.
I, maybe that's it. Council comments, would we start, Mr.?
Sure. It's good to see people here tonight. Maybe one or two of you'll stay all night. I know you guys are out of here. Anyway, I guess I've got a request. Couple, couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, we talked about the pedestrian bridge, pedestrian bicycle bridge down Alamo and Toto. And it has been brought to my attention that possibly we should look upstream a little bit, and not necessarily give up on it 100%. I went down and kind of looked at it a little bit. And what would be the chances of moving that project upstream and hooking into Village Lane, tying over the bike path? Rather than waiting for Caltrans to get their act together, keep putting pedestrians and bicycles on this little bridge that can't handle them anyway. We've got some money put in into this that we're still holding before we lose it. Is this something that we could possibly talk about?
Comments? I have a comment on that. The valley plan shows a bicycle path that goes along the open space in Creekside. That plan goes over to a private driveway that runs through my backyard. So by putting a bridge path over to the Village Lane, it'll ease the transition to running that path through, which the neighbors all object to. So that would be, that'd be, it might be an uphill battle to fight to do that. So, uh-uh. You're looking for nods.
I'm always open for discussion, but, whatever.
I think possibly we should wait and tell Ms. Jamison gets back on this one. I'm thinking about it, and I'm kind of a toss-up on it right now, so. You, I don't think you're going to get your three right now, but I think possibly if we...
Okay, all right. Well, everybody give us some thought, and I will bring it back next time.
Okay. We're going to discuss it at SB CAG coming up here, I believe, in next week, so.
So, well, if, you know, and that doesn't necessarily need to be the location, but just rather than waiting for Caltrans to get around to something. I think that is more my point, and that was something that was...
Okay.
An idea that was brought up.
Otherwise, the possibility of looking up and down the creek for a different crossing?
Yeah, yeah.
Not necessarily that one.
Rather than being stuck on 246 on that bridge, rather than just giving it up until, completely, until Caltrans finally decides that they're going to do a bridge, which could, you know, that pushes it out there a number of years.
You need something to divert back to a mission somehow. You know, that's what I would think.
Yeah, there was some talk years ago about having a bridge into Nielsen's parking lot. The problem with that is it really, then you're putting them in a private property with no control.
Then you're putting them in, yeah.
So there was some discussion.
Granted, if we go up to Village Lane, it does go through some private before it hits Village Lane.
So we'll wait...
At least you're thinking outside the box. Too far, but that's okay.
At least I'm thinking, Jim.
I know. Is that it, your council comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Skid.
Nothing for me tonight.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah, no comment.
I have one comment. I received an email from our city attorney talking about the legalization of recreational marijuana. It's going to be on the ballot in November, probably. I'll read this to you. There's not much time, but it would be legally possible that if solving takes action before August 12th, it can place a special tax on the ballot for November that would tax the sale of marijuana within the city limits. Otherwise, we would have to wait maybe as long as the next general election and theoretically lose revenue during that time. If the council would like to consider this issue, please bring it up the next council meeting so we can have it on the action item for August 8th. With that, is there any thoughts?
In that, are we just trying to cover a bet? Or something else, in case we get stuck with it?
The short answer is yes. That's a situation where I don't like having deadlines pass without having brought an issue up. I have, I have no reason to believe that there's any great chance to make great revenue in the city of solving. In fact, to do so, you would have to change policy. Current policy is not to allow commercial growing, et cetera. So you would have to change your rules, and you're not required to do so. But it's, the opportunity would pass if we didn't at least talk about it without the council having a chance to chime in.
So if we do agree to attack, are we agreeing then to change our policy?
Not required, no.
Okay.
So it'd be like a donation if someone decides to have a transaction and they want to give us some money? If it feels bad or something?
Because it would only really apply to retail transactions that take place in the city limits.
Which can't happen, right?
Not unless you change your policy.
You can't go with any dealers in the back alley and expect tax.
Right. So it would be if at some point it were legal, we would be able to have the tax.
So for instance, if you put the tax in place now and changed your mind a year from now, then you'd have the tax in place, and you'd have that then year to get tax revenue from. But if a council changed its mind later and there's no tax in place, it'd have to wait to a general election to put a special tax on the ballot. And I don't want to pretend like we got together at staff and decided to advocate for this. It literally is just that there's this small window of opportunity, and I wanted to make sure the council was aware of it. We don't even know, practically speaking, if it could generate revenue. The, as I understand, the ballot proposition for the state, there's going to be a certain amount of tax that goes to the state that isn't going to go to a city. And so if I'm a, if I'm a retail pot dealer, I'm pretty sure I'm going to want to locate in places that have no or little tax, rather than going to locate in the places with municipal tax, unless it's a real large jurisdiction. Because then you're going to make enough money at it, you can afford to take that burden on. So I don't know if it's practical. I mean, in the olden days, if we assume that the ballot measure passes, then it's going to change the world. In the olden days, small cities could become the unusual place with an active medicinal marijuana dispensary and establish a tax and know that their dispensary was going to serve large swaths of the county. But if the recreational measure passes, I don't think that logic is going to work anymore.
Something desert hot springs.
Yeah.
I would say it's, I would say it's an item that should be on for discussion.
Do you agree with that?
No.
Okay. Would you put that on the next agenda item, please?
We will do that. Now, what I'll have to do is put it on for potential action as well, because, well...
Time is short.
Yes.
Time is short.
In the essence of time.
Yes, because we have, you have to get everything to the elections officials 88 days or more before the election. And so I'll have to have something that's, how many? Yeah, so, yeah, it's four days after our council meeting is August is the turnaround time. I type fast.
You got it. I have no comment, no other comments. Now we can go to correspondence received from the, for the, to the city. And it was a letter from the solving senior center thanking us for our grant that we approved. And they are, they're offering lunch to any of the council members that like to stop by at noon at the senior center. And they have a pretty, pretty, pretty good lunch. The lunches catered from or made by the Attarag village, so. Onto approval of the agenda as presented, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. City council minutes of July the 11th. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of July the 11th? If not, can I have a motion?
Yeah, there was one statement I made about promotion. I think I mentioned three quarters of a million dollars rather than millions of dollars. Yeah, I forget. Let me see if I can find it. It was... Yeah, it was third page, agenda item eight, third paragraph down on the next page. We spend millions promoting. I think I said three quarters of a million.
Okay, then kind of a motion accepting the minutes with those changes?
A move. Second.
Been moved in second. If all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed, four, and one absent. Onto the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any consent agenda items for discussion?
I'll just pull C for a second for commentary.
All right.
And it's, I am going to the league.
But Lisa, would you read C, please? Four C, six C.
Item six C, appoint councilmember Skid as League of California Cities Voting Delegate.
The only comment I want to make is, this will be my last meeting I'm going to be going to for the league. And I just hope that a couple other members of the council or city staff may come down, because it's usually a very nice meeting, there's a lot of things going on, and it's really hard for just one representative to get to all the various presentations. And I know Neil was able to make it last year, and I think he feels that it was, felt that it was was a useful or helpful tool for him. But anyway, it will be enjoyable. It's in Long Beach this year, so it's not a long distance to go. But anyway, that's the only, my only comment on that one.
Thank you. Can I have a motion accepting the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
Been moved in second, would you call her over, please?
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. Passed with a four oh one absent. Onto item seven.
Item six, Mission Drive Improvements Preliminary Design Update.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. Matt Vanderland...
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. Matt Vanderlanden, your Public Works Director and City Engineer. And to start off, I'd like to just kinda give a brief overview of the items covered in this staff report. We're gonna be talking about crosswalk improvements at a few locations along Mission Drive. We're also gonna be discussing signal upgrades and possible adaptive traffic signal, traffic control systems. And that's for the three primary traffic signals along Mission Drive being Fifth, Fifth Street, Adirag Road, and Alisal Road. And then we'll be discussing the, a possible transit center crosswalk. That's a crosswalk across Mission Drive near the, near the Transit Center. And then we'll be discussing the additional streetlights and lighting upgrades along Mission Drive. That's basically from, I think it's Niborg is the, is the street all the way to Pine. And then we, we're discussing wayfinding signage in the city, primarily, primarily along Mission Drive and, and a little bit into the commercial area of the city. And then emergency vehicle signal preemption. So if you don't mind, I'd like to kinda, I think it makes most sense to go kind of in reverse order and talk about the traffic signal preemption first. And as we go through each item, the staff is gonna request your direction. So I think it'll be the most clear and simple. If we take one item at a time, then you can have questions and, and discussion and then give staff direction on that, and then I'll move to the next item. So with that, regarding the, the traffic signal preemption proposed project, just as a reminder, I think it's been over a year ago now, but the city council, in considering this, felt that it made most sense if, if a, a traffic signal preemption project were to move forward, that it should be implemented through the, throughout the whole San Onofre Valley. So all the traffic signals along Highway two forty-six in the San Onofre Valley. And city council directed staff to, well, city council also felt like if we did a project like that, it made sense for all these, the other agencies involved to participate and share in the cost. Even if the city was the lead agency to move the project forward, we felt like it wasn't appropriate for Solvang to bear the whole cost of such a project. So staff developed a letter, and we sent that out to multiple agencies. Basically, everybody that we could think of that might possibly be involved. So that includes the Santa Barbara County Public Works Department, the Santa Barbara County Sheriff Department, Santa Barbara County Fire Department, AMR, the American Medical Response. We sent a letter to the Chumash Tribe. We sent a letter to the California Highway Patrol. And we sent a letter to the city of Buellton. I think that's it. But anyway, so we didn't get really favorable response. Buellton was kinda lukewarm and, and indicated they would, you know, possibly be willing to participate with us, but very non-committal. And several other agencies said that they were not interested for various reasons. Some of them, most of the reasons were, you know, made sense. AMR said they really can't afford that, and their vehicles switch around all throughout the county, so they couldn't afford to install that equipment in all their different vehicles. And but at any rate, the fire department, which is Santa Barbara County Fire Department, which is the agency that is most interested in implementing the, the system, did step up and say, hey, we had, we had a meeting with them. Well, first of all, they responded to our letter, gave us a letter in writing back. And then we had a meeting just a few months ago with one of the captains from the station here in Solvang, and also Matt Ferris, who is the battalion chief with the County Fire Department. And they indicated that the County Fire Department would share in the cost fifty-fifty for a scaled down project that just focused on Solvang. So they proposed, and we felt this, this was, made sense and, and would be a good project still, to install the, the traffic signal preemption devices on the four traffic signals here through Solvang. And they would install the preemption devices, the vehicle units, in all of the San Onofre Valley fire vehicles. So the vehicles stationed in San Onofre, here in Solvang, and in Buellton. I think it's a total of fifteen vehicle, vehicles that they, that they were considering. So we had that meeting, and that sounded great, and we, we wrapped up the staff report and included that in here. I will say, following the meeting, we sent them an email to just confirm everything in writing, because they told us verbally in this meeting, and we wanted to, you know, make sure we had something in writing before we moved too far ahead. But at this point, if the city council likes this project and directs staff to move forward with it, the first thing we would do is develop an agreement and get that signed before we spend any money. So, but if you do like it, we'd ask that you approve the budget adjustment and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. And his counterpart, the, the sheriff, I mean, the fire chief would be the one that we'd have request, execute the agreement for the county.
Are, are there any questions to the staff report regarding these? Seeing none, then we'll take it to the, to the public for comment. Is there any comment in the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Any discussion? Any comments? Just have a motion.
I'll make a comment here first, is that this is something I've been kinda looking at on for the probably last eight, eight, no, nine, probably about ten years, though. And it first was turned down, it's come back a couple times. And I'm glad to see that we've gotten this far. I know just a couple of days ago, I was out going to the post office, and Engine Thirty was on a run, and it was a very interesting intersect, uh, happenstance at the Alisal and Mission Drive intersection. Couple cars coming the other direction, east, particularly eastbound, they had their windows rolled up, and they had the engine, the fire engines coming. And with the building on the southwest corner as a sound barrier, it was, they, they got stopped in time, but it was, it was interesting. And I think this is something that is really needed in the city of Solvang. And I think it will prob, I think if we go ahead with it, it will also give impetus to City of Buellton to go along with this also. But I think it's a very good idea, and I hope the rest of the city council agrees with me. And I thank you.
Would you like to make the motion?
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we authorize the city staff to draw up an agreement and authorize the city manager to assign, sign it for an amount of, do we have an estimated amount of thirty thousand, I think it was thirty thousand dollars for us and thirty thousand dollars?
Right. So the budget adjustment would be sixty, and then we would.
Be reimbursed.
Invoice the, the county.
And for, for an amount of no more than sixty thousand dollars, with fifty percent to be reimbursed from the county at a later date.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second that with comment. Having driven fire trucks around this town is sorely needed, has been for years.
Uh, it's been moved in second. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes. That's passed with a four oh one absent.
Next item. And, oh, I shall find what, which, what this item is. If it's what I think it is, I'm gonna have to accuse myself.
Yeah, this, this next item is discussing wayfinding signage in the city. And hopefully you can see that fairly clearly. But you can see in the lower, the lower left-hand corner that there's quite a variety of signage throughout the city. And one of the goals that staff felt the city council was communicating to us was to not only have wayfinding to city parking lots and other key points, but also to develop something that would bring a kind of a cohesive and unified and consistent look. So if you can imagine when you go to Disneyland or to like a, a national park, all of the signage is all very uniform, and you know you're within the national park once you get there and drive in, 'cause all the signage is, is, has, has a kind of a consistent theme in the way they, they, they look, even though the information communicated may be different. But, so this is, this is the first step the consultant did was an inventory and looked at all the different signage that we have. They also identified all the various points of interest. This, this list could be added to or, or modified, however the city council prefers. We identified some of the museums and the parks, the Solvang Visitor Center, and, and items like that. But again, this, this list of, of, of points of interest can be expanded or reduced, however the city council prefers. They also looked at signage coming in to the city from the various different directions. And so one, one of the things they noticed was not very good signage coming off of Highway one oh one and from Buellton. So that would be one of the, one of the recommendations. And you'd have this signage along there, along Highway two forty-six there would require an encroachment permit from Caltrans. But, but we would propose this similar kind of uniform, consistent signage. And the consultant developed just some concepts. The, the, these aren't really any, there's nothing specific about these that the staff is recommending, but it's just to give you an idea of kinda how it might look. There, there's this, this one with, with the, the shield, the Viking shield and the cross from the Danish flag. And then there's one that features the mermaid. And you notice in the upper left on the, they're showing the back of the sign, and they, we felt this was a really nice idea to have some kind of artwork, consistent artwork on the, on the back of the sign to make it look more attractive instead of just some big blank, you know, bare spot. But, so again, this kinda has the shields across the back. And anyway, so these, these are just two, two different concepts. And so you notice the actual shape of the sign, the, the, the features on the, on the outside edges of the sign and the overall shape. You know, this is basically more square or rectangular sign. This one has kinda the curving top and bottom, kinda go with the circular logo with the, the mermaid. But you, you can also notice they've looked at how you might mount the signage on different kind of poles for pedestrians and, and, and vehicles. So one of the problems that we have right now with, with some of the signage is it's not, it's not really, well, some of the, some of the messages are designed for drivers, but the text is too small. And so you have to be so close to read it. And, and it's got information that, yeah, if you're a pedestrian, you can read it fine, but it's, you know, if you're a pedestrian, you're not really looking for a parking lot. You know what I mean? So, so this would have standard, uniform sizes of the text and everything throughout the signage. Some text designed for motorists, some for pedestrians. And so what staff is suggesting, now this, this project, the wayfinding signage was not, it was one of the priority projects, but not the two that the city council directed staff to proceed with first. But we did continue with the preliminary engineering on all this. So what we would suggest is, if you like this, if you like the direction this is going, then we would, we would take this to the Board of Arch, staff would take this to the Board of Architectural Review, develop the concepts and get, kinda hammer out a final or maybe two versions of concepts similar to this. Then take that to the Planning Commission, and then, and then at that point, we would bring it back to city council, and we could budget for implementation, you know, next fiscal year. So taking it to the Board of Architectural Review, and the Planning Commission would happen later this fiscal year, and then we would bring it back to city council. You could make a final decision on how, what, how you like, what signage you like. You know, and you can modify it any way you, you choose. If there's some feature that you like, for example, if you, if you like the, whoops, if you like the corner treatment, how it's kinda got that little scalloped edge, you know, you could, you could do this with, with that or whatever, you know, I'm just, you could, you could modify however you prefer. But anyway, that's what we, that's what we suggest, that sort of course of action. And we would just like your direction or guidance on that, how you'd like us to proceed with that.
Are there any questions? No questions? No comments? Okay, we'll go to the public. Yes, but go to the public.
Really quick, before you guys discuss anything, I wanna make sure it doesn't put me being on Board of Architectural Review and take.
Karen? I, I didn't hear you. Could you come up and speak in the mic, please?
She can speak.
Did you hear?
Yes.
I wanted to just make sure that because I'm on the Board of Architectural Review, that it didn't put me in any type of violation, sitting here listening to your discussion.
Okay, good. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
I like the concept. I like the continuity. I like the fact that it's not a generic sign, the tin sign. It would probably be a whole lot cheaper, but I, I think that, you know, we, we need to keep our identity in Solvang. And I think one of the things that I, I really do appreciate is the lettering. And I think not to, not to bang on the old style lettering, this is easy to read. And I, I, there's something I like. We were, you have some international symbols on there that I think is very important. But as far as style, that's, and coloring, that's where we can make the difference, I think. I, I really like it. And I'll make a motion.
And I'm just. Would you like a comment?
I'll put my two cents for it then. I like the concept. The only comments I'm gonna have, the one comment, one thing I really like is having the Solvang sign in the city of Buellton pointing towards Solvang.
That was, that was a question I was going to ask.
The, and the other, but the only other thing I would, I, I like, also like the idea of having a design on the backside of the signs of people leaving town while seeing something. The only comment I wanna make, other comment is, is to make sure we have some sort of anti-graffiti coating on it so that the, does not get painted over in, you know, thirty-five minutes after, after the lights go down. But I, I really like the concept, and it's something I think, personally, I think it would be a good thing to send to the Board of Architectural Review and come through. And I will be, be, be somebody else's decision when it comes back. But I, I like the basic, I really like the basic concept. Thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman, any comments?
I agree with both Deuce and Skid.
I, I personally like this particular design of the two. And then, and then the comments about a sign in Buellton, I thought that was appropriate, too.
We'll, we'll put one on your way to Buellton in Solvang, too, at the, at the city.
We could work a deal with them. We could put Buellton that way and Solvang this way, and we could, we'd be happy, possibly. My other question is, is the current signings that we just installed in the pots, would those be salvaged or would they be?
Yeah. That was a question someone also raised. That would really be up, up to you. The consult, we didn't, we didn't give any, we didn't try to influence the consultant in any way. And actually, I was really impressed, Rick Engineering, they have a, an engineer that's like, does this actually, is his primary work, wayfinding signage for all kinds of all kinds of cities.
Uh huh.
And, uh, and, um, facilities, but, uh, so it's very experienced. You can tell, I mean, just looking at it, it's, it looks, it's pretty professional.
It is.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, they, they, they didn't really care for the pots, but, but that would ultimately be, you know, the board of architectural review would look at it, planning commission, and they would make recommendations to the city council and then be your final decision.
Would, would you like to make the motion?
Uh, I think I already did.
That we, that we go ahead with the project?
We, we, we move it along.
Okay. So proceed how staff suggested.
This is, this would not, this would be, are you looking, would, would this be required to have a, a vote on it or is it just giving, given direction?
Yeah, just direction to keep it in the priority.
Okay, so I would say, no, I think we've given you direction, I think four, four, four out of four sitting here, I think is giving you direction.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, great, thank you, that wraps up that one.
Additional streetlights, some lighting upgrades?
Okay, so the first, the first few slides here are consultant did it again, an inventory, they took a look at the locations of the, uh, existing lights and identified, uh, locations where they recommended we install new lights. So you can, you can see the legend there, the, uh, the, the blue are the, um, yeah. Yeah, sorry, the blue are the proposed locations and the red and green are existing. So this is just starting down by, um, uh, Nykobing and working our way down to Pine Street. So basically, the consultant came up with two, two recommendations, or two options, I should say. Uh, one is to continue to use this American Revolution, uh, designed lan- uh, light fixture and, uh, replace the existing light fixtures, just the top, uh, with modern LED, what they call cutoff, uh, fixtures, which basically are more night sky friendly and direct the light down onto the roadway and the sidewalk. And then in addition to that, fill in with the same type, um, uh, light pole and, and, and this new, the new, uh, kind of up, updated, uh, American Revolution fixture. So the, again, the first option would, would be adding lights along the route where, where needed and replacing them all the existing ones, so it'd be LED and the cutoff type. So the, this, the section, sec- second option would be to add, add lights where needed, but also replace and come up, come up with a different design. So you'll notice this is similar to the one that Buellton added along highway two forty-six. Uh, this is just one possible option. So this shows you the top of the, the pole and some different possible light fixtures that are more decorative. Uh, this just shows a couple of samples of how, how it's applied. The, you can, you can get different, slightly different bases for the bottom of the pole. There's different colors you can get. You can actually get custom colors if you want, but there's a few standard colors. So again, this is showing you a few of the different options and, and, uh, variations of the, of the same, similar type of fixture and pole. Then we, you can get, uh, you can see there kind of in the middle, there's little decorative, uh, finials or whatever that, that you can have added to the top of the light fixture if you want. So I don't know how elaborate, yes, yeah, those. But anyway, so then, this is another type of pole. It's also, uh, decorative and the, this, um, brochure here is, although it shows you installations, it's mainly focused on the pole itself. So this is just to show a couple of the ones that are approved by PG&E that we could use. PG&E basically has kind of a short list of what they would approve because they don't want just any kind of rickety pole out there. But, uh, so those are a couple of different kind of poles and you can see it's got different, the, it shows the kind of details of the base on that particular one. And you can also get, this one's actually made of concrete. It's a similar, but, uh, I'm sure you've seen those around in different places. And that sho- that shows, uh, the detail of the pole and the base, the concrete. And again, you can get different decorative bases for this one. I think that's the last slide, okay, that just shows a detail of that. Yeah, so that's, that's the last one. But anyway, so, so obviously there's a big cost difference if you replace all of the poles with new poles and a, a different, more decorative, um, fixture, uh, the cost goes up considerably. The, the cost is more than doubled if you, if you change the poles and, and, uh.
I, I believe that, uh, that we should pass this by the, the, uh, yes, the, uh, and, and also WeWatch is be, is, should be considered also to, for lighting, up, uplighting to keep, make sure it's down.
Sure, sure.
And then, then, uh, I, I understand that, that PG&E has a limited number of, but, but they're also looking at more, no?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Because this is not something we need to do tomorrow. Maybe we could, we could, we could at least inquire to PG&E to see if there are other, other options, particularly, I'm thinking of the downlights, you know, for the, for WeWatch and their, and to keep, uh, night skies clear, that kind of thing.
Yeah, well, all of the fixtures that I've shown you here, you can get them in a, a cutoff type version where the light goes, yeah, that are night sky friendly. They have either something inside the light or the top is covered or, you know. But yeah, definitely, um, we'd be only proposing ones that are night sky friendly. And, uh, the, the big thing is the cost difference.
Sure.
We thought you'd want to.
Well, I. A question, you mentioned one of the poles was a concrete pole. Uh, are the others fiberglass, aluminum?
Well, the ones that we showed you here, they're either steel, the, the amaran one, the white one, uh, that can be different colors, but that's steel. This here is a cast iron pole and then there's the concrete.
So, something, so, so if some, somebody hits it, they're gonna know they hit something.
Yeah, so that is, that is a consideration. I know since I've been here, um, twice, streetlights have been hit, they're kind of flimsy, uh.
The current ones have, are fiberglass.
Car just flew right through it and kind of disintegrated the, the, uh, the light. But, um, certainly the, the damage and injuries associated would be much less. Of course, you're only supposed to be driving twenty-five thousand an hour. I think the people that hit them were going quite a bit faster, you know, late at night. But, um.
No, I, I can, I agree with, uh, Mayor Richardson that this is probably something that also ought to go back to the BAR and for, for this, for a discussion, this, like I said, this is.
We can bring it to them at the same time with the wayfinding signage. And they can look at both.
Let, let them have some time to mull it over too.
And, and looking at your map, it looks like most of the additional lighting are, lights are basically from, uh, Nyborg up to Fifth Street. I really didn't see too many lights, uh, on the, because I see a bunch of them along that side there, but when you went further and up past, uh, there's a, there's a few in there, but not a whole. Oh yeah, there are actually, let me just see, there are, there are a few more in there, so, okay.
It's just, it's just, uh, there's just a whole section there where there's no lights, so it kind of looks more like wow. But, but it's, uh.
There are, there are more, there are, are more lights than I saw there than the first place, so, okay, yeah. But I think it's something that would be, take it back to the BAR and let them take a look and, uh, maybe give them, when you go with them, give them a little bit idea what, you know, the cost and what they're looking for on that one.
Mr. Zimmerman?
I like the idea of upgrading, um, and it just comes down to the cost. Out of curiosity, how long have we had the current lights, uh, fixtures? The, the poles out there now? And what's the lifespan that we've gotten out of those?
Well, it's a, it's a mixture because, you know, when one of them gets hit or whatever, they replace them. But, um, I think a lot of them were replaced when, in, in areas where we have brick sidewalk, they were replaced with that project.
Yeah, I think it was when they went underground with the utilities back in.
Back in, in the early, late eighties.
As I say, eighties probably is when they.
Caltrans did a major.
Major undergrounding.
Undergrounding and they did a ma- uh, a little bit of widening of, uh, Mission Drive, so they did a major, at that point there, Caltrans came in.
We actually have a couple of the ornamental ones, one's in the park, if you notice, it's got the flag light that shines up, there's actually one, two, I think, three in the park. We have two on Copenhagen at the crosswalk. So we do have some of that more decorative, they're actually quite pricey, we got those through, uh, uh, solving antique store, but, um, yeah, we do have some of those in town also, those were put in in, probably in the later eighties, I think. We were, they were looking to try to do that across town, but it's, it's, as mentioned, significantly more expensive for those poles than for the fiberglass ones that PG&E puts in.
So a, a few of the existing poles right now are metal, they're, they're the older ones and as PG&E replaces them, they use the fiberglass mainly for cost savings for them. Technically, they own and, own and operate the signal, but if we, I mean, the streetlights, but if you, so if we wanted to upgrade it, uh, the cost to upgrade basically would be on us, then they would, they would continue to operate them.
The, um, forty-five hundred dollars for a pole is an absolute ripoff. Yeah, that, that's, that's a ripoff. I don't like the halipane because it throws too much light all over the place. Uh, it, it does not, uh, e- even if you run a cutoff in that, just the way that the halipane dis- distributes light, it, um, it, uh, negates any, um, any, uh, cutoff or dark sky type situation. Um, the, the, um, even with, with the, uh, your, your lamp, uh, fully shielded up in, you know, with the spinning on top, the way that prismatic glass or, um, acrylic just grabs it and throws it everywhere. Uh, way, way too bright, you're gonna, you're gonna spend, you, you're gonna spend way too much light in areas where you don't need to put it or shouldn't be putting it. So, um, the, um, you know, the American classic or whatever it's called, but, uh, I, I feel would be the, the better. We also don't need to look just like Buellton. Uh, and, and with that, um, you can control your light much better since you're, since you're not putting it in a globe, in a prismatic globe like that. Um, definitely, um, LEDs, um, look for no more than three thousand degree Kelvin. Uh, I, I kind of like, uh, twenty, twenty-seven hundred, which is more of an incandescent color and it doesn't get down to the, the bug light look of, uh, high, high pressure sodiums. So you're, you're getting a, a nicer, softer, easier, uh, coloring on your, uh, your, your temperature if you, if, if you can hit in around, around twenty-seven hundred.
And what's the units on that again?
Pardon?
What, what were the units on that, twenty-seven hundred?
Yeah, well, twenty, twenty-seven hundred, uh, degree Kelvin, that's, that's your incandescent light. Uh, you, you, you know, if you wanna, if you wanted to just, um, um, warm it up just a little bit and go up to, uh, three thousand degree, that isn't bad either. It's just, you know, it's just a tick above. But I, I never have liked the, uh, the high pressure sodiums, uh, because that, that gets down into bug light. So it, it would be a nice, nice to get, get away from that.
In, in case there is a, there's a question about his, uh, we have an expert lighting manufacturer right here that knows his business, so, so he's not, he's not just coming off the top of his head, so. So with that, uh.
And look, look for about a ninety, eighty-five to ninety CRI on it.
So with that, we should go to the public for comment, is there any comment in the public about the lighting? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Uh, do we just need a nod to go ahead and send it forward to the, the?
Both, both options still?
Yeah. What do you think? Okay.
Okay, great.
Done. Okay. Transit Center Crosswalk. Would you like to take that one next?
Actually, at that point there, when you get, starting to get to crosswalks, I am willing to.
How about the signal timing graphic, would you rather go to, can you go to that?
I think that actually all, anything to do with stoplights, uh, crosswalks or, uh, what else do we, what else do we have on this one?
Crosswalks, signal and adaptive tra- uh, traffic control?
I think you're, this is, uh, the first one we're gonna talk about is the Transit Center.
Unfortunately, the last time we discussed the Transit Center, I had, it's, I have five hundred feet and it figures out that the one corner of the Transit Center is like four hundred and ninety-eight feet. We, we did, we did a measurement on that one last time and we were getting ready, so I, I am, so I am gonna call it an evening and.
So you actually stretched the tape measure across Mission Drive?
It actually, no, it actually, no, we actually used the little diagram that the city has for the five hundred feet.
Uh, should I, should I discuss the traffic signal upgrades first then, or?
No, because I have, I have a traffic signal.
Oh, they're all.
Even closer than the Transit Center. So.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, I am going to have enjoyable evening for the rest of the evening.
Okay, for you, just think about us while we're here slaving over.
Mm-hmm, I know.
So you only get credit for half, half a meeting. You'll get paid for a full one, but you only get credit, you can only count half a meeting.
Okay, we'll do. Actually, I will leave this here for staff here. Have a good evening, people.
Note that councilmen's get departed. I'm trying to find that.
All righty, so the, the next item is the Transit, the possible Transit Center Crosswalk. So when we discussed this, uh, previously, um, Caltrans has kind of changed their, uh, their opinion, I guess, on this. So we didn't think that they would, they would approve something like this. But in talking with their, uh, our consultant contacted them and talked with their staff and they said that they would consider it and, uh, as long as we, you know, met various design standards and so forth, that they would, uh, uh, approve it through a, an encroachment permit process. So that's a little vague because we could go through and submit everything and they might not like something about the design and make us change it in such a way that maybe the city council wouldn't like. But, um, and it, in such case, if you did want us to, or direct us to proceed with this and Caltrans dictated any kind of change, we'd come back and get your okay on that and, uh, to, further direction. But, um, but at any rate, you can see on the little drawing here, the consultant does re- uh, recommend not big bulbouts of, of, uh, seven, six, seven or eight feet from the curb, but they do recommend these, um, minor, um, curb extensions is what we refer to them rather than the big bulbout. The curb extension does several things. Uh, one thing is it's a visual cue to the pedestrians that, hey, that's a place to, uh, cross a- a- as well as the, the crosswalk on the road. But also to the drivers is the same thing, you've got the visual cue of the crosswalk on the road, but the curb extending out just a little bit, uh, defines the crosswalk a little better for both pedestrian and the drivers. Also, having the curb extend out a little bit, it allows us to, gives us more space to, uh, put. Also, having the curb extend out a little bit, it allows us to, gives us more space to, uh, put the ramp there. Cause right now, on some of the locations, it's very difficult to fit the ramp and have an A D, to meet the ADA requirements and have an ADA path of travel behind the ramp. So by having a little more real estate or square footage to work with, uh, it allows us to, to do that better, to meet those ADA requirements. Also, we're gonna be putting those, uh, well, if council directs us to, we'll, we'd be proceeding with those, uh, flashing pedestrian beacons. And so those are new signs that are have, that have to go in the pavement. And this gives us a little more room for those to fit and also have more space for pedestrians to get around the sign and the trees and any s- any streetlights or whatever that are nearby. So, uh, so this is what the consultant came up with, s- uh, the public work staff, engineering staff reviewed it and made comments, and we went back and forth with them, uh, to fine tune it to this design. And so, uh, at this point, the staff is just asking for your direction, whether or not to proceed with this, and if you'd like us to make any modi- if you want us to proceed, if you'd like us to make any modifications to the way this is laid out.
Any comments?
Um, in, in your. In your, uh, section A there, um, we're, we're showing fifteen feet of lane and then eight feet of parking, is that, uh, is, is that correct? On, on your section up there?
I believe so, I.
Is, is, is that eight foot, is that the parking?
Yeah, g- generally, the parking is a, takes a, cars are six to seven feet wide, and so the eight, that's intended to represent the.
Okay, so that represents, uh, parking. Alright, um, I'm, I'm just asking a question, I'll comment on it later, after public comment.
My question is, how many parking places is that crosswalk gonna take out?
Well, that's the other thing, and that's a good question, glad you brought that up, cause I did wanna mention. You know, right now, you see that this crosswalk is down, uh, just east of the, of the public restroom.
Right.
So basically, you're gonna, you're gonna take out two parking spaces. Yeah, maybe, possibly four at the most, but for sure two. And they had to move it down because, you remember at the Transit Center, we have the Santa Fe Valley Transit, of course, but we have, um, the Wine Country Express, the Breeze Two Hundred, we have the Cleaner Express and Amtrak, all, all those buses come in there. And the Cleaner Express and Amtrak are those big buses, and, uh, actually frequently, there'll be two buses there at the same time. Where one will pull in and pull more to the front, or, or will be kinda centered in the red curbed area. They'll see the other bus coming up and they'll pull forward, or they'll already be forward, to make room for a second bus. So, so it is fairly, uh, common, I mean, I've, in, in the few times I've actually went out and looked, uh, in the last, say, three months, um, two or three times, I noticed there were two buses there simultaneously.
Are, are you saying that there'd be two parking places before the, we're heading, uh, east, uh, west to east? There're two parking places in front of the crosswalk and two after, plus the one in the crosswalk?
Uh, no, the to- the total. So the total distance from here to there, that, that stretch, that's approximately two car spaces.
That's, so that's forty feet?
Well, it's not forty feet, but this is, um.
From yield to yield, that would be forty.
You're talking two parking places, automobiles are about twenty feet, yeah. Because there's no dimension there in that bottom, in that bottom part.
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd, it'd be a little over twenty feet, that, that distance.
That distance is twenty feet?
It's about twenty-four feet, I think.
Okay, then, then to the left of that, where, where does the, uh, first parking place start? Right about where's?
I'm not positive, uh, that's a good question.
Just about where the double, uh, the section A A line is, somewhere in that area.
Yeah, I think it's actually closer to here, where the red curb starts, cause you, you have one bus will be here and the other one will be in front of it. So it's, it's, it's somewhere along the frontage of the restroom, I believe, and I, I apologize.
Matt, if, Matt, if your map is correct, uh, or if your drawing here is correct, it shows that red goes up almost to that sectional sign, that section A's, uh, symbol there. If, if you follow it up there, it looks like it's maybe about, um, I don't know, uh, six, seven feet west of there.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's where your, where, where red, red curb, uh, stops, if, uh, scales correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that the drawing is intended to indicate where the red curb stops, but, I mean.
Yeah, the scale is.
We can definitely look at that, so I'm, I'm not.
Twelve is red, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, actually, the, the red, the red shows to the left of that about, uh, a half an inch on this drawing. The left of the A A section.
Yeah, but I think, uh, I think Brad's saying it's beyond it in reality.
Yeah, we looked, we looked at a, aerial, like a Google photo or whatever.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right. He's a professional. So, so you're saying it's, it's, uh, right in line with the restroom?
This is the restroom line here, and then the rest is about.
Red is about in there, huh, okay. So, so we're gonna lose a parking place there?
Yeah, we'd lose for sure one on each side, and.
And then on the opposite side, on the other side, on the, on the eastern side of that, uh, crosswalk, we gonna lose one or two? The reason I say that, there's only ten parking places along there, from first to the Transit sign. If you're gonna take out four of them, that's forty percent of the parking going away.
Yeah, it's one of those situations where it's really not much more, it's a little more than one, but, uh, but not that much more. But, to position, you, you wanna position the, the crosswalk in the, the optimal location. Uh, you don't want its location dictated by, um, the parking stalls, and you wanna kinda adjust the parking stalls around where you position this.
In, in reading this, there was a, a statement of, uh, it could be plus or minus a few feet, twenties, seventy-five feet or a hundred feet?
Correct, that is correct, we can move it around a little bit.
Without admitting anything under.
Sorry?
Without speaking under penalty of perjury, that is a primary location for jaywalking, right at that spot. For, for those people who, who, who walk.
Well, actually, it's probably a little bit east of where, or west of the real entranceway to the liquor store. That's kinda where they headed.
It's all along that area.
Yeah, yeah.
The consultant and staff, we looked at a number of factors, we looked at how far it was to either existing crosswalk in either direction. But to put it per, really close to centered, would put it, like, closer to the, uh, will be in the red area in front of the Transit Center. So then they shifted down a little bit, and there's driveways and different things, um, that we were trying to avoid on the north side. And, um, so this is ultimately, uh, close to where they're recommending, but. And, and, and as our city attorney mentioned, there's, basically, people, a lot of, they do a lot of crossing right by the restroom and in front of like the subway and the, um, you have the Mandarin touch right there.
Right, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
They, they're also caught, cross to get from one bus stop to the other. Uh, the bus drivers actually transfer there, so they'll cross at that similar, near the Transit Center also.
I can see the advantage of having one there, I just see the disadvantages, which is, we wanted to keep our parking for the park. Uh, if we lose four parking places, it's, uh.
Well, what, what we could do is, look at, look, on the, on the north side, we could look at adjusting the red curb location a little bit. Uh, but yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you can't really put the cr- for sure, you're gonna, c- considering both sides, for sure, you're gonna lose at least two parking spaces, cause you got the, you have to, if you're having a crosswalk, you have to have an access ramp, you can't have parking in front of access ramp. So, for sure, you're gonna lose two. Probably not more than three.
Plus, you want, you don't want, you know, you don't wanna hide your crosswalk between two parked cars, I mean, the whole point of this is.
I, I understand, I understand that, because you want the visibility, and the, and the bumpout does that. And I underst- and, and, and it's gonna narrow the traffic lane through there, which is a calming effect and all that, uh.
Uh, since, since we're talking about parking, I'm gonna throw my two cents worth in on the whole thing. Um, we're getting more and more congested in, in solving. Um, I'm, I'm not, I, I understand the bumpouts, I under- I understand how they work, how they, you know, how they, they define things. Uh, I also look at that, um, with, um, let's, let's say it's, it's a time of day where there's, there's no cars parked there. And, uh, so all of a sudden, it's a full-on bike lane, and what it does is starts pushing bikes out into the roadway. Um, I think we need to seriously look at, uh, parking all along Copenhagen, and I know it's not gonna be real popular.
Mission, or?
Yeah, Mission, yeah. We need to look at it all the way along there, and I know that's not gonna be real popular with a lot of people. But due to the, with, and, and I know I'm straying way off of, uh, this, uh, particular intersection here. I think it's something that needs to be looked at seriously. With, uh, with increased congestion, uh, with, uh, increased bike riding, um, we've, we've got, we've got thirty feet of lane right now. Um, with, uh, uh, and that has to accommodate, uh, east and westbound traffic. It has to accommodate east and westbound, uh, bicycle traffic, that you got a three-foot bubble around. It doesn't leave a whole lot of room. Um, so, I'm, I'm not trying to turn, um, Mission Drive into a Speedway. I'm trying to keep from killing people. And for making traff- traffic be able to move rather than be congested, rather than be in dangerous conditions. Therefore, I think we need to seriously look at, do we, looking into the future, do we need parking? Should we have parking along Mission Drive? Um, there are other, other options that we can do. Uh, we can look at the school, and I think that's in one of your, uh, other, um, presentations as alternative parking. That's, that's my feeling on it. I think, uh, yes, this, this crosswalk here is definitely needed. If it scoots one way or the other a few feet, I really don't care, it's, it's a, it's a necessity. Uh, there are, I'm surprised that there haven't been more people hit there, darting out from behind cars. I really am. Uh, probably the only thing that saved, uh, a, a lot of accidents is, you can't get over three miles an hour in a car through, going through there. Um, I, I think bicycles would have better chance taking out pedestrians than cars would. So, anyway, that's my two cents on the whole thing.
Well, you know, you haven't actually asked, but at least the engineering staff, we're not big fans of this. You know, we, we've pursued it because the city council asked us to, but, and we're happy to do whatever you, you direct us to do, to the best of our ability. Um, but, you know, we're not big fans of this, and this is gonna, this is not gonna.
You're not big fans of?
Uh, this, this mid-block, um, crosswalk. Yeah, it's, and it's also gonna potentially slow down traffic.
Matt, right now, we have a, we, we have almost a full block crosswalk. Whenever there's a break between cars, that is a crosswalk these days.
That's true.
And, and, and there's no control over it. Um, they can wander out at any time from any direction.
That's a good point.
And, and if they're short enough, you don't see them till they're in lane.
That's Matt's engineering background, as, as we are taught all through our school, mid-block crosswalks are not, or mid-block crossings are not a good thing. But as, as Caltrans has now changed, they, they used to be the mantra, no mid-block, no mid-block. And now Matt has acknowledged they are even allowing those, you know, and that, it's kinda that, that pattern. Yet we have a defined pattern that people cross there. Unless you're gonna put a barrier along there, which I don't think you really want in front of your park, you, they're gonna continue to cross there, and so it's the lesser of two evils, let's, let's give them a spot, so at least they're all doing it in one spot. And I, you know, I know Matt has some consternation over it, but I think that would be the, the better, uh, better solution for it.
I read somewhere where animals never cross at corners. They cross in mid-block because they can get across without more interference with the traffic. So, it, a mid, a mid-block crossing might be the safest, uh.
The only thing is, is when you're driving, you don't think of mid-block as being a crossing area, so maybe that's the reason why we haven't had anybody injured, because we don't have a mid-block, block, uh, crossing. Now with this, they're just gonna walk across, think everything's okay, and here comes a car, you know, when there's less traffic at times and we're driving a little bit faster. I think the most important thing though is, is, uh, making sure we keep the pedestrian, uh, safety paramount. And if this has proven to do that, then.
And you wanna, you wanna have a signaling device to halt the cars, is that correct?
Excuse me?
You wanna have a signaling device to stop the cars or the pedestrians?
Pedestrian flashing beacon that they can activate.
And then that's, so that holds up traffic in both directions for the amount of time that the pedestrian has to go across. Or if they were jaywalking, we can let him get halfway across and continue with traffic. So it was, it would, it would, it seems to me that it would slow the traffic up through the town as it is, you know, whether, because it's gonna be asynchronous to the rest, the traffic signals.
Yeah, I mean, I think council members.
Take, take a cruise through there, take a cruise through there on a busy weekend, you got, you're gonna have various groups of people crossing at various spots all at the same time. At least this way, they get hurted in one spot, they go over in a, in a certain allotted period of time, rather than helter-skelter wherever.
Yeah.
And that happens, I see that.
If it is, if it is effective.
On a regular basis.
To bring the pedestrians to that point, rather than just crossing like all over the place, like, like council member Deuce, uh, mentioned, then it, then it, I don't think it would have the, uh, traffic, uh, slowing effect, because you're getting people to come together to a single point rather than.
It is, would it be possible to have a pilot study with, uh, just the crosswalk without the bumpouts and the parking, to see how effective it would be?
Well.
Seems like the bumpouts are the right way to do it.
You can't really put the ramps, well, you can, but you, what we, like, for example, on the, um.
Without the ramp, though.
To put it in, Caltrans wouldn't approve it without a ramp. You have to have the ex- fully accessible crosswalk. So, I think it'd be problematic to do a trial with Caltrans, one, cost-wise, you wouldn't wanna do two different versions of the ramp. But, yeah, we, we, to do that, because you gotta step down curb, we'd have to do a, construct a handicap ramp there.
And you wanna have enough room to have at least minimum four feet clear behind the ramp?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, you know. So, whatever your pleasure is, just let us know and we'll.
Any other, any other questions of the staff? We'll go to the public for comment, is there any public comment, please, Karen?
I'm Karen Waite, Solvang resident. Um, I was taking a look at this, and there is already a crosswalk at First Street, and there's already a crosswalk at Adderdag. So, it would make sense to me to improve those crosswalks instead of putting the crosswalk between them. And I have to agree with, um, Hans Deuce regarding the parking along Mission Drive. Um, if you, for example, go to Santa Barbara and go up and down State Street, there's no parking along State Street. It's a major shopping area with stores, and they have parking lots, and we have already, you have already examined, um, uh, alternative parking areas, um, which I think that should be a priority. Um, also, I wanna add that I've seen the big Amtrak buses pull up to the area where you're saying that the transit buses pull up. I think that's a pretty inappropriate place for big buses to pull up, because it is a danger to pedestrians, you can't see if you're crossing. And then we can touch again on, uh, the signage, which I think is a wonderful idea. Why can't you have, um, have signs, maybe that point towards crosswalk? And if you have improvements on the two crosswalks that do exist with the lights, people will see those and probably gravitate towards the other two crosswalks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that's a possible alternative, is to upgrade the other sidewalks first, see how successful they are and, you know.
That's, that's, this is about an eighty thousand dollar project to get that accomplished? Any other public comment? See them, bring it back to the council. Discussion?
I have recognized the need for years of a mid-block crosswalk. And this goes, this goes back many, many years, because it was, in my day, it was getting from Wilkes's across into the park to hang out. And that was forty-five years ago, or more.
I've heard-
And things have not changed a bit.
I've heard it said that native, that Solvang natives can walk through any street at any time. It's grandpa.
Well, yeah. This stuff doesn't apply to me, okay? I'll cross wherever I damn well please, thank you. But, but I'm talking about all our visitors. They don't get the same-
They don't get the same privilege.
They don't get the same consideration. So, no, really, really. There have been, there have been times where I've come through, wrong time of day, you know, the sun's the wrong angle, and the darting out. It's, and I'm not saying I'm getting older or anything like that, but it's getting scary. Something distracts you on one, on one side, like you think somebody might be coming out on you, so you're keeping an eye on them. And all of a sudden, you find somebody from the opposite direction coming out on you. That happens. I think it's a dangerous area, people are gonna cross because of the park and getting over to Subway, or the liquor store, or changing buses, or just the fact it's a long ways from First Street to Attar Dag. And they want to get across. And they're gonna do it within about a hundred feet there, from the transit center to a little bit east of the restroom. That's where the crossing's gonna happen. And I think we need to provide for it.
Is that a motion?
Sounds like it.
Is there a second?
Well, to move it along, I guess.
Yeah, you really need to vote, whether you want it or not, number one, that's the first thing, proceed with it or not. And if you want to proceed with it, do you want us to make any changes to it?
Paint all the curb red.
Say what?
Never mind, Jim, just say yeah.
I'm looking for a second. This case has been moved and seconded, we call a roll, please. And the motion is? What is the motion?
That we're gonna look at the project.
Look at the project and-
No, we're ready to move forward with final engineering and permitting with Caltrans and construction. So, we would finish the engineering and permitting this this year and-
Can, is there, is there an opportunity for us to review the engineering study to see if, if maybe we might want to consider shifting it left or right? Based on, based on, based on the parking? Or would, you know, would you adjust the parking to make the crosswalk fit?
We'll attempt to modify it to minimize loss of any parking, right?
Okay, I accept that. We had a question from Charlie.
Yeah, right, he could've stand there with his ticket book.
Our, yes. Charlie, Community Resource Deputy for Solvang. With this going, if you guys are planning to go forward with it, are we leaving first, just as it is?
No, that's the next, yeah.
Or we're doing the mid-block before we have one that's already existing? All of them are the same?
Yeah, we're gonna be doing all the-
Since this was separate, in previous city council direction, this was kind of like an add-on. So, we wanted to talk about this by itself before we talk about the rest of it, but we're gonna do that in just a minute.
Just was curious.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, good, so, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. That passed with the three, oh, one, absent, two absent.
One. One abstain, one absent.
One. Okay.
Okay, the next item is, for discussion, are the signal upgrades and adaptive traffic controls. So, when we, when we did the Mission Drive corridor traffic circulation study, one of the recommendations of our traffic engineer, Oros Engineering, was to look at the possibility of implementing an adaptive traffic control system. So, it was just, it was just a concept at that point, no investigation had been done on it. And so now, Rick Engineering, their traffic engineers, did some additional detailed investigation of this. And the signal upgrades would consist, this again would be at Mission and Fifth, Mission and Attar Dag, and Mission and Alisal, those three intersections. And the upgrades would include replacing crosswalks with high-visibility ladder-type pavement markings, and replacing pedestrian signal equipment with accessibility, accessible pedestrian signals with the push button and countdown pedestrian signal heads, which recently Caltrans partially completed that work. And the third item would include replacing all non-ADA compliant curb ramps. So, several of the curb ramps, the locations all have the access ramps or curb ramps, but there's several of them that are no longer ADA compliant. Those would be replaced. And then replacing, re-striping the minor street approaches at Fifth Street and Attar Dag to accommodate dedicated left-turn lanes. So, Rick Engineering also looked at the implementation of an adaptive traffic control system, which could adjust in real-time signal timing plans based on the current traffic conditions, demand, and system capacity. It was determined that the small improvement in traffic flow could not justify the significant capital cost as well as ongoing expenditures to adjust and manage the system. So, basically, Rick Engineering recommends against an adaptive traffic control system. Rick Engineering also reviewed the addition of a dedicated left-turn phase or protected left-turn phase from the minor streets, or these are the cross streets now, Fifth, Attar Dag, and Alisal. And it was determined that the level of service would worsen from level of service C to level of service D at all intersections. And the protective permissive phasing would increase the average delay for all vehicles at all intersections. This condition would be made worse over time as traffic volumes increase. Also, adding a left-turn arrow takes away not only the time for the arrow, for the green arrow, but also the time for the yellow and red phases that go with the green arrow. Another component of the traffic signal timing is coordinating or coordination with the adjacent traffic signals. This coordination must take into account both the departing traffic from that particular traffic signal and the arriving traffic from the adjacent signals. So, to make the coordination work, all the traffic signals need to be on the same cycle length. And, of course, the dynamics of each intersection is quite different. So, having the same cycle length is, would be problematic. Anyway, these factors would significantly compound the delay in traveling along Mission Drive. As such, it is not recommended that the minor street left turns be separately phased with either protected or protected permissive phasing. So, you know, city council directed us to look at the, those left turn arrows, and the two possible alternatives of a protected, or what it's called a protected permissive phasing, were looked at. And our consultant staff concurs, they do not recommend, recommend that. So, what we would like to do is have the city council give us direction and approve the first items I mentioned, replacing the crosswalks with the high-visibility ladder type, replacing, finishing off any pedestrian signal head upgrades, and replacing all non-ADA compliant curb ramps, and re-striping the minor street approaches at Fifth and Attar Dag to allow, or to accommodate dedicated left-turn lanes. So, that's what the staff is proposing the project would be. And we're asking for your approval of that, and any other guidance or direction to modify that or make any, do anything else.
I like what, yeah, what staff has, it only sounds about right.
Yeah, all we're dealing with is just crosswalks, some striping, and some curb work as necessary, correct?
Yeah, new access ramps.
Yeah.
So, that would affect the whole, like, corner, basically, that just-
The signals will basically stay as they are.
Correct, correct. I think there's a couple minor modifications to the, some of the pedestrian crossing signals. Yeah, at Attar Dag, they have like the countdown one.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
I haven't, we haven't done a full inventory of all the improvements that Caltrans has made just recently, because we were like, right in process of wrapping this up and starting to write the staff report when that happened. So, what we would do is finish inventorying the upgrades they made, and if there's anything further that we would recommend, we'd incorporate that in. But that's not a high-cost item. Really, the most expensive thing would be replacing the, an upgrade in the access ramps, the curb ramps.
I think it's, you know, I like, I like the turn lanes on both Fifth and Attar Dag. I think it can just make life a little bit simpler. And I would, I would say we go ahead and give that direction to move forward.
Before I start talking. The, this, the timing graphic regarding signaling, it shows a two-minute cycle. Is that, is that etched in stone? Couldn't the cycle be two?
No, that's not, that's not the exact cycle for, for the signals on Mission Drive. That's kind of a typical, so we just show that, it's intended to just be representative, but it's not, not the exact, it's not the exact cycle for, for any of these three signals.
You know, a suggestion was offered that the intersection at McMurray and Two Forty-Six in Buellton having four, or having three cycles, actually, right? East first, west, and then north-south, or something like, east-west, get both, get both draw. Then, south-going-north gets a shot at the time, and north-going-south gets a shot at the time, before east-west goes again. And the thought was that that same intersection timing could be set up for Attar Dag and Mission, I mean, Alisal and Mission. So that, so that, did you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yes, okay.
I'm getting black blank looks, or I'm getting no comments, or the minds are going like crazy, saying reject, reject, reject. So, what, can I hear a comment on that? Or was that even considered? Would it make a difference? I know that Buellton has horrible traffic backup at rush hour, and it may be because of the way they synchronize those signals there at McMurray. Plus, they have the freeway problems.
What you're describing is, is close to the, the, what do you call it? Protected permissive phasing. So, I don't think they looked exactly at that, but, like I said, that's very close to the protected permissive. Where you get an arrow, and then one is green for the through, you can still make the left turn. Because you're adding, you're still adding a left cycle on there.
Yeah, well, I realize that, that they're adding a cycle, but it's, it was a thought. And we haven't checked that kind of thing out, if it would be worthwhile to do.
We can do that. I mean, I can confirm with them, yeah, we did, we did actually mention that to them, and I, I'm just not certain if-
It might even be the same situation at Fifth. Because, because of pedestrian crossing times, because the left turns off of Fifth onto Two Forty-Six, and, and sometime, and right turns off of Fifth onto Two Forty-Six, blocks that traffic. And it may be worthwhile that way to have east-west go, then north, and then south go separately, you know? If that would be an impact, a delaying impact, or would it improve throughput?
You're adding a phase, in essence, because you think about Fifth right now, there's a single phase for north-south movement.
Right.
If you're in it, you want to split that in half, give each one, go to a three-phase on that. So, that actually adds green time, takes away green time from the main, main drive. So, that's what Matt's saying, any additional phasing, which is what you're asking for.
Well, when you say takes away green time, it's because you've got a fixed time that you're working with. Stretch the time out so that-
There's only sixty seconds in a minute, so that, there has to be green for so many seconds on each, if you follow that. So, the longer the cycle doesn't really gain you anything, you still have to give every leg a share of that, share of that time. So, you could do it, I'm just gonna say it's gonna reduce how much is available for the main line and the left off of that, yeah.
On Mission Drive, yeah, so that's the negative consequence.
Well, you have a hundred-and-eighty-second cycle, sixty seconds could be north-south, the other balance be east-west, one at a time. Divided into thirds, instead of two halves.
Yeah, but if you're adding additional phase, then it's gotta take, if you, like you were describing, if you hold that, the total cycle the same, and you add an extra phase in there, it's gotta take away from some-
No, it's not, it's not keeping the cycle the same, it's stretching the cycle.
Okay, well, if you stretch the cycle, then again, that's causing additional delay on Mission Drive.
That's correct. But would that, would that improve the throughput on the intersection, though, that's the question?
Oh, well, yeah, so, that's kind of what I touched on at the beginning. So, the level of service would drop at that intersection. You certainly can modify the signal timing to give more preference to the north-south, you know, the minor street traffic. But what that's gonna do is just magnify the delay on Mission Drive. And so, really, if you think about it, too, if you make a turn from one of those side streets onto Mission, and you've just created a traffic signal timing that causes further delay on Mission, you're just taking someone off the side street and putting them into a traffic, kind of like a traffic jam on Mission, so to speak. I mean, you know, during, during, during heavier traffic periods, because you've, you've extended the time between greens on Mission.
On Fifth and Mission, they put pedestrian light on in the morning to hold that green longer for the east-west section of it. You stood there and watched that?
No, say that again.
When the, when the traffic light going east-west, the westbound traffic light, because I stood in that corner and watched all this happen.
Is that Alisal? And, oh, Fifth?
On Fifth.
Okay, so, I'm gonna, go ahead.
The light turns green, the pedestrian light goes on, and it stays a full length of its cycle for pedestrians. When it go, when the pedestrian light goes off, then there's an extended time that goes on the green for the east-west traffic. If that pedestrian signal wasn't punched, then I would assume that the east-west traffic cycle would be quicker.
You know, we did ask Caltrans for the exact signal timing for all the traffic signals, and we didn't get any response. So, I, I don't know exactly what the cycles are and all that. We did, like I said, we tried to get that information, we thought it would be helpful.
I just-
But, I mean, I have personally had at least two conversations with Caltrans- But, I, I mean, I have personally had at least two conversations with Caltrans. And they've, they're adamant that they have fine tuned those, uh, the timing. Uh, to provide the best level of service, looking at both directions. Which, uh, which, I mean, I think they do want to, um, show slight, uh, preference to Mission Drive. Because that's where the most of the traffic is going through and of course, that's, that's their, their road. But, um, uh, yeah, so.
But what I, I see traffic backing down Fifth toward Copenhagen and maybe two light cycles before they can clear it, you know, let's.
That's at a particular point in time and day.
And if I do a Roy translation of, of traffic engineer talk, I, I think what Matt and, and Brad are saying is if. Any adjustment you make along those lines, the, the person on Fifth may wait a little less on Fifth. But they're gonna ride out and stop on Mission, cause Mission has now been impacted. So you're, you're actually not gonna make their, their trip any faster. You just put their wait from a few more seconds on Fifth to more seconds or, or even longer on Mission. Cause you've congested Mission further.
I, I think I understand that, but I wonder if it's, would be an improvement.
Well, accord- according to Caltrans and who has, you know, traffic signal experts that deal with tr- traffic signals like this all over the place. You know, and all throughout Santa Barbara County, in, in Santa Barbara and in San Maria and everywhere there's a state route with. That's like, kind of like a main street or, you know, goes through a town. They, they don't believe so and, and Rick Engineering has confirmed that, or they've, they've come up the same conclusion.
Okay.
So I, I, I wish, I wish I had a, you know, magic wand or something, you know, but there's no silver bullet to, to fix it.
I'll put a period in that one.
We, we, staff still would like, uh, direction. This is one, this and the, the other sidewalk, uh, crossing improvements that we're gonna talk about in a minute. Those are the two that you've asked us to move forward first. So we have in the budget this year to finish the design for this and go to construction at the beginning of next fiscal year. This time next year we'd be constructing this.
Do we, we need, do we need a motion?
Yes, we just like, um.
Let's do it.
Direction on the.
Yeah, I think you've agreed, they've already voted on the, the base improvements, right? Didn't we vote on that?
No.
I thought we did, the, the crosswalk improvements and the, did we not get a motion on that?
Crosswalk on the.
No, no, I thought, didn't we have another vote?
Yeah, this is signal upgraded adaptive control system, it's two point two.
But I thought Hans had, did a motion on just the base improvement, did I not hear that? I, it's been a while.
I, I don't think I actually made a motion, I was just trying to clarify that that was what we were talking about. And Neil and I, we kind of nodded our heads back and forth and I think we're getting really close to maybe making a motion.
It's the striping and the, and basic.
What kind of motion would you like to see?
Staff, right.
Proceed with the, the, the first.
Task two point two.
First four items. The first four items and, that are recommended in, in the, in that section.
Task two point two. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, what's the, whatever.
I'll second the motion. Public.
I'm not gonna say I heard it, but.
Any public comment?
Kind of late, isn't it?
Aren't you an amateur traffic engineer like the rest of us, cause we have California driver's licenses? No. Okay, I'll second the motion. Would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
That was a pass. Three, one, zero.
Okay, so the last item. Sorry. Uh, we have three locations of proposed sidewalk, uh, crosswalk improvements, excuse me. Uh, the first location is at Fourth Place and Mission Drive, uh, you can see it there. That's the, uh, we're, we're calling that Fourth Place South. Whoops, sorry, wrong way. Then there's Fourth Place North and then there's First Street. So again, the consultant is recommending the, uh, the slight curb extension, not, not seven or eight feet, but the three feet. And again, that provides more room to provide a, a current proper ADA compliant, uh, access ramp. It also provides a little more space for the flashing beacon, pedestrian activated, uh, crosswalk beacon. And, um, creates the visual cues that, that we discussed previously for the drivers and the, uh, and the pedestrians. So that's the one, again, at, at, at First and Mission. And at this location, our consultants recommending, this is at, uh, Fourth Place North. So this is in front of the, the RoboBank there and the, the Lans- Lansby.
Can, can we stop at, at one of these fourth places? The, uh, those, both fourth place, uh, have bulbouts at the intersection.
Not bulbouts, curb extensions, but.
There's still three feet out into the intersection, it's bulbout, am I, am I guess?
Yeah, that's correct, that's what our consultants are recommending.
And it's, and at the Fourth Place South, uh, if you, it goes across the street to another intersection, it doesn't have a bulbout. It looks like, according to this drawing. Or the bulbout isn't as severe, maybe, that's what I'm trying to say. Because, because this goes around the corner and I can, I can see problems with, uh, large vehicles trying to make that corner. But without going into the, uh, northbound lane. No?
Well, most, most cars, when they go around a corner like that, they don't cut right up to the curb, but.
You know, we're talking, uh, I hope there's gonna be improvements at Fifth Street, Fifth South or Fifth Street. Because the, the, the streets are narrow and you get a truck going through there. And with that bulbout sticking out like that, I think it would have a problem.
Yeah, they, they looked at the turning radiuses and everything for vehicles and stuff, so, um.
There is, uh, there, there isn't a way that that ADA ramp couldn't be recessed like it is across the street?
Well.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about First Street. First Street ADA doesn't have the bulbout.
I thought, well, you wanna look at them one at a time or?
Yeah.
Okay, so you wanna, wanna look at this one first or the?
First Street.
Okay. Whoops.
There, you see the, on the, uh, east corner? That, that ADA ramp? It doesn't punch out.
It does.
No, no, the other one, on the across the street. No, on the other side, on the east, on, right there, that one.
Oh, yeah, that's just, that's just representing the existing one that's there now.
Right, well, why can't the one on the left be the same way? Why does it have to have a bulbout?
Oh, it doesn't have to.
Thank you.
Yeah, it just, yeah, yeah. It doesn't have to, yeah, if you, if you want us to eliminate that, we're happy to do that. It doesn't have to, uh, it does make the, it, uh, easier to accommodate everything. You know, we, we do recommend it, but, but it doesn't have to have it.
I, I would like to see those, those, uh, bulbouts eliminated.
Well, truth be told, yeah, I'd like to see, see them gone too. Everywhere, because I, I feel they impede traffic.
But they do.
On, on both the corner and across the street?
Sure.
On the north side also?
Anywhere, anywhere we can get away with it.
We're sticking on into traffic flow.
Okay, get rid of them anywhere we can get away with it.
Yeah, yeah, if, if, if you physically don't need that to, uh, to make your, uh, your slope work, uh, then.
Don't, don't.
Don't do it.
Okay.
Don't do it.
Okay. Okay, so, so we can proceed with this one, basically, uh, I think the ramp on the south side. Uh, we would still recommend replacing it. The one on the north side, if we eliminate the, the curb extension, I think it's good the way it is. So, proceed like that on that one?
This, this is, this is, this is in front of Paulus, isn't it?
No, this is First Street, this is by, you know, the, uh, Farmer's Market and Solvang Park and everything. So you're, you're directing us to proceed with this, but no curb extensions?
Yeah, no curb extensions, it's, it's working well now.
What about on the north side? You don't think, uh, it's necessary to be there?
Well, we've just utilized the existing ramp that's there.
There's already a ramp there.
Yeah, it says that, we'll have to look at, uh, positioning of the, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong. That you want us to proceed with these, um, the pedestrian activated flashing beacons.
Yeah, well, it's gonna, you could, you're gonna have to go ahead with that, the pedestrian activated thing, but to get the bulbouts out, it's.
Uh, no, the, the ramp on the north side, um, is compliant.
Is compliant.
It's already, it's a, it's, it's not as old as the other ones.
So, uh.
So we'll have to just look at how to position the, the, the sign though, I think we can make it work. Okay, so that, that's good direction on that one.
Fourth Place South?
Okay, this is the fourth, this is.
Fourth Place North?
North, yeah, this is where the RoboBank. So, so this one, one of the things we're trying to do is, you can see the existing crosswalk is very skewed. And it's always safer, uh, and it's, uh, more typical what drivers are, are anticipating. To have a perpendicular crossing, it's actually slightly shorter as well, when you make a perpendicular rather than at an angle. Uh, so it's a little safer. So again, on this one, you're saying eliminate the curb extensions?
Yes.
And, um, wh- what, how do you feel about, uh?
Can you slide it?
Moving it over to?
Yeah, moving over more west, uh, east, I mean.
Well, it would be, it'd be, if we eliminate the curb extension, it would be shifted a few feet to the east.
Right.
To line up with the existing ramp.
Yeah.
Uh, the question is, are, do you, are you okay with that, eliminating the other crosswalk? Uh, basically, we'd be moving the crosswalk from the west side of the intersection to the east side of there.
Yes. And, and I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, we.
Because of, especially where it lands here on this side.
Right now, the, it comes, it, the crosswalk goes right in between two driveways, so there's cars coming in and out of those. Right when, you know, it just complicates, uh, things for drivers trying to watch for cars and pedestrians. Car, cars coming in and out and pedestrians also.
I agree, that, that's a bad spot there, but yeah, move it down to the, to the east, like you have the drawing, without the bulbouts and the extensions.
So, so question, um, on that, um, does anybody, okay, let's say they come from the south side of, uh, Mission Drive. They cross, uh, cross over to the north side, which direction do they predominantly, um, uh, go? West or east? Does anybody?
It's both, if they're crossing from the south, like, for example, some people park in the parking lot there. And it's, it's, it's a mix, cause a lot of people go to the ATM, the bank, um, yeah, the Succulent Cafe there and Solvang Brewing Company and the.
Um, what, what I'm thinking is the more people will go to the west, because there's more business over there. So by, uh, by moving the, uh, the, um, crosswalk to the east side of Fourth Place. That's gonna impact the pedestrian, that's gonna increase pedestrian traffic across Fourth Place. Which, uh, only has a stop sign and, uh, could, uh, cause some traffic problems. Of people trying to come down on Fourth and even making a right-hand turn. Because of pedestrians that, uh, that have the right of way to go where, whenever they want. In a, in a, in controlled, um, uh, intersection.
But if you look at the shorter distance they have to walk, I think it actually speeds up the traffic, based on how many cars are coming off of Fourth Place. Just that little bit of distance could add a little bit more time. It seems to make sense.
Well, what, what, what I'm, what I'm really thinking about Neil is.
All those people would be crossing Mission and be blocked on that right turn would get blocked when there, so they're gonna be, that pedestrian's gonna be in front of them either crossing Mission. As it is now, or crossing Fourth as with the new configuration, so it really wouldn't change, that conflict would be the same?
Yeah, maybe.
And with the bulbout or what, pop, whatever you wanna call them? Curb extension? Since there's more, since there's more, or since there's less pedestrian street time? Does that increase the flow rather than impede on timing?
In, in theory, yes, you know, but what you've done is you've eliminated, um, two full steps of a pedestrian in the travel lane. And so they're out of the, they're, they're onto a safe zone quicker, uh. It, it's, it's relatively minor, but it is.
We also added a crosswalk in the middle of the block to slow traffic down. Going along Mission, another one, I mean, an extra step or two on a pedestrian going across there probably wouldn't have an impact that much, my guess.
Yeah, well, it sounded like you wanted the staff to eliminate the curb extensions for them.
Yeah, no curb extension.
Yeah, so this is just, we asked the consultant to evaluate this intersection, see how we could improve the, um, crosswalk here. And this is what they recommended. We can't have a nice perpendicular cross, crosswalk on the west side of the intersection, because there's dri- a driveway there. So otherwise, we would've done that, you know, years ago probably. But, um, so this is what they suggested to improve, uh, pedestrian safety and, um. You know, get it more perpendicular and all that, but, uh.
I predict the Lansby is going to be concerned, because it'll pull a parking place or two out of the way in front of their business.
Uh, they have a green curb there, it's like for unloading, loading. But, um, it would actually, would actually, uh, gain, I think, one on the, the east side, or west side, rather. Yeah, cause, um, you know.
But that's okay. Because I think that, I think it's needed, that crosswalk's needed on the west, on the, on east side of, uh, Fourth Place.
Be clear, we wouldn't be adding it, we'd be eliminating the one on the west side and moving it to the east side of the, of this intersection.
Now, if you, if you leave the, if you leave that, um, that, the north termination right as it is. Uh, you're basically terminating in a lane without the bulbout.
Oh, we'd shift it over, yeah.
So you, you would shift it, okay, thanks.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's just, yeah, correct. And another thing is, by moving it to the, uh, east side of the intersection, it's actually a little more closer to the, in between. The crosswalk at, to the middle of the.
Right.
Distance between Attar Dag crosswalk and Fourth Place South crosswalk. You know what I mean? Cause these are, these two are kind of close together, if you move it a little bit to the, to the east. It gets a little closer to the midway between the other two. So that was also what they looked at. Cause what happens is, I mean, a lot of people, well, you know, you've seen it, they just don't, they wanna take the shortest distance, you know? They don't wanna walk down, you know, a few feet.
So it's agreed that, that you'll move the, you'll take the bulbout and extension out and then move the ladder eastward to the current curb?
Okay, great, and then, uh.
That's, and that similar thing is that.
This is, this is the last one. So again, we'll eliminate the, uh, curb extension on the corner there. Uh, so one of the concerns about this is, right now, you can see, um, where can I bring it? Oh, there we go. Uh, so there's a tree right here and the sidewalk is kind of uplifted and it's kind of a maintenance problem right there. And right now, this takes pedestrians right into this planter with this sign and it's, it's. It's not really as safe as it could be. It's not an ideal situation to take pedestrians and take them, I think we're running out on your battery, or whatever this is. It's not really the best. But, uh, it's not really the best to take it like that. I mean, this is a little bit more perpendicular, not much, but it's a little bit better. But, uh, the idea here is we could, you know, I really, of all the curb extensions, this is the one I think really we oughta consider. This is all red here anyway, red curbed, so you're not gonna lose any parking. But to get a proper access ramp in there, to redo the sidewalk here and, uh, it, it, it's gonna make it a lot safer, basically, for pedestrians.
Right, right now, that is a constricted sidewalk area, very constricted.
Is there any reason you couldn't move the south end of that crosswalk across the street to in front of the Mermaid?
We, we looked at moving it here, going like that. We did look at that. Uh, we could do that. Uh, I'm trying to remember why it was that we, uh, decided to move it over there. Um, I think, I think this, this was a, a more severe, more severe angle. It was further from perpendicular. This was a little bit better, closer to perpendicular. But we could take it from here and instead of putting the ramp here, move the ramp right here.
Yeah, something like that might be a, a solution.
Something like that. Yeah, that's totally doable. We could do that.
Is that getting into the Danish Inn driveway by, by going, going, uh, that far east? Cause it looks to me you're coming right into the corner almost of the Danish Inn property, where the tree is and the lamppost.
I'm not sure I'm following your question exactly. I'm sorry.
Existing storm drain.
Yeah, there, there's a driveway here. That's, it's shown there. And there's another one there. So.
Okay, so.
Just off the edge of the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd, we'd, we wouldn't be obstructing the driveway or anything.
Okay, alright.
But it's all red along there already, so, um.
Could you draw something up like that to see if it's feasible?
Oh, no, yeah, it is. It is feasible.
Yeah.
What do you mean, Jim? I think Matt's meaning he's already drawn it. Are you, you want something different?
Yeah, yeah, not, not, not going from the, from the southeast, southwest corner, but move it over to the southeast corner, the bottom, right?
Yeah, so I mean, they, they actually sketched up, uh, all different configurations, just kinda real rough, uh, not, nothing finalized or anything. But, um, so this was, this was looked, this could be done. And if we move the ramp, we were kinda thinking, see, what happens is, most of the people, they wanna go to Paulus.
Right.
Okay, that's the bottom line, I guess. Good food. So, um, they, uh, I mean, I've seen people standing right here, literally like thirty feet from the crosswalk and just go across.
Right.
Just straight across. And I'm just like, really? It's only twenty feet away.
Yeah, that's how it works.
So, so that was, that was also, we looked at the pedestrian movement and everything. And, uh, as far as the, the spacing of all the crosswalks along Mission, leaving this on this side, uh, and moving the other one to the east side, that was kinda getting a more evenly spaced and we thought that was gonna help the situation a little bit. Uh, so, we felt like this was better. A lot of people are coming from here and here, from these hotels, and wanting to cross. Uh, I mean, we could do it here. It's fine. We could make it a little more perpendicular, move the ramp over here a little bit and get it, you know, pretty close to perpendicular. Uh, that, that's totally possible, but, but based on just our observation of pedestrian habits and movement, it seemed that having it on this side is actually, was better.
That's what I would think, too.
But, but not dumping them here, just having them, cause if they cross right here and they don't wanna go up the ramp, they can just turn right here. And it's, you know, it's fine. But if you're in a wheelchair and you go right here, you're putting them like right in between some parking spaces and the back of cars and stuff. And, I mean, this area is like hatched. There's, there's striping that is hatched, so there's no car parked here. But there's cars like right, you know, close. Um, anyway. So we, we would still, we can eliminate this, uh, curb extension. Uh, we would still recommend doing this one and r- r- leaving it on this side, you know. Although, like I said, we could move it over here, but.
That corner, though, with all the people that end up there, that curb extension on both sides does make sense. Based on that flow. Or at least keep it on the west side. Not move it over to the right, or on the, uh, east there of Fourth. That just, that flow just seems like that's natural. And, and also based on where it already is existing.
Yeah, cause the sidewalk basically ends right there. And right now, you're just like.
Right.
You don't really know where to guide people. So at least this way, if they're crossing, you know, it's, it's, it's a more, it's a safer, more appropriate end to the section.
And you're, you're not turkey, you're not taking out an intersection doing it, which you, on, on the south side, you're taking out an intersection. Somebody with something halfway big, like a motorhome.
Right, right.
Uh, that's, that's towing a car, uh, would, would have it, and they will try to get down Fourth Place and they'll be on top of everything, doing it.
Besides, the, the horse, horse thing's gotta do a U-turn there.
Correct, that is true. Yep.
But I, I like it on the west side of Fourth Place because the traffic does come from the motels on the south side. South side of Copan, or, yeah, Mission.
Well, if, if you considered, uh, left turn lanes out of Fourth Place, they wanna make a left turn, they have to wait till pedestrian crosses. If it was on the east side, they can make that left turn without interfering with pedestrians.
Or go up to Fifth.
Then they can't make a right turn.
They can't make a right turn, right.
No, who's stupid enough to make a, try to make a left turn on Fourth Place anyway? Yeah, I've been around long enough, Jim. I, I bet you, I bet you tried to do the same thing on Pine Street.
I just said that, just for fun. I don't go down Fourth Place.
You can give us some final direction on this. We can wrap our, our evening.
Well, uh, shall we, shall we get some kind of a consensus on where we want that, uh, crosswalk?
I like it just as is. It seems like it, it works.
Without the south bulbout.
Okay, so there's two votes, two votes for.
Okay, I'll agree with them then.
Perfect. Three votes.
Take the bulbout out and.
Okay, beautiful. That concludes my staff report.
Do we need a vote on that?
Are there any questions to the staff report? Seeing none, do we need to go, can we go to public for comment? Are you still awake? Okay, we'll come back to the council for decision. Uh, where are we? We need to vote on, uh, Ta- on, uh, task two point one?
No, I feel like you gave consensus and direction, so we're good.
You've got direction?
Yeah, so just to kind of, uh, uh, remind you, the two projects we're proceeding with then, well, three actually now. Improvements at these three crosswalks. Adding the mid-block crosswalk there near the transit center. And the, um, intersection striping and access ramp upgrades where the traffic signals are.
Yes, yeah, without bulbouts.
Right.
Right.
No bulbouts, no curb extensions.
Right.
Well, we got a couple, don't we?
One.
Only one, so we're not doing it at the mid-block. I thought we already said yes on that.
No, I think.
Did, did we agree to it?
Well, didn't, didn't you say you, you needed it at mid-block?
For the, for the, for the, uh, ADA.
If you don't need it at mid-block, I'd rather not have, but I thought you were, you were really tight on that one.
Well, on, on the nor, on the north side, uh, at, in the park, we own that property, so we could, we could work around that on the south side. So we could just limit it to the north side.
Well, that'd be the important one, the south side, because of the parking thing.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, limit it, the curb extension on the mid-block to only the north side.
Okay.
And just, just for, as a comment, th- these depictions of these ladders, uh, I'm picturing a black outline on a white cross patch. How about, can we eliminate the black part and just do the white?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Like, like that is in the rest of town?
Correct, it would match, exactly. Yeah, Cal, Caltrans actually has a standard, which is very similar to the cities. And, um, uh, that's what we would, we would utilize. A- actually, when we did the Slurryso project just recently, they told us that, um, their ladder crosswalk standard, they would want us to, uh, have the, the edge, the white edge stripes and then the white ladder. Nothing would be black. It would just.
So, you're putting ladder rails on it, in effect?
Where, where it's shown black there, that would be all painted white.
So there'll be, so there'll be ladder rails with the cross. That's, that's Caltrans requirement?
Correct, yeah, that's what they told us. We'll, we'll try to get them to, when we go through the encroaching permit, we might deal with somebody different, I don't know. But that's what they said. Uh, and they did send us their, um, standard details for crosswalk striping. So, you know, that is, uh, they actually have three different ones, but on Mission, they, they said that that's what they would want, so. But we'll see. We'll try to get them to exactly match our other ones.
Good.
And, and just so you know, Matt did try to get them to put the ladders in when they just did the project, but they, the cost was too prohibitive. We did make an attempt at that.
As, as long as we can go white and we don't have to go piece of green.
That's exactly. Okay, is that the end of item number seven? Okay. Item number eight. Are there any, any, uh, council member reports?
Yep.
I don't have any. The advanced calendar, and we don't have a closed session, so if there's any other discussions, then we'll adjourn the meeting. And thank you for your patience, our audience. You sure you wanna do this, Karen?
Sure.